Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Wow, that was loud. Welcome to the Lunandary Town Council meeting for November 16th, 2020 at the high school cafeteria at seven o'clock. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, will ever be and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Today I went to a fire exercise watching over 50 firefighters train from around the area on search and rescue and general attack fighting skills. Let's continue to like have good thoughts and pray for their safety as they continue doing that hard job. Thank you.
Okay, first thing I have is is public comment. Mr. Flyer contacted me. He asked to be moved to next week. He is delayed and will not be able to get here this evening. I have also asked the fire chief if he would come up and remind us all about what the CDC regulations are with regards to distancing and wearing masks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As this building, in light of every other town building that we enter now, it's a recommendation for anybody inside this facility that they need to be donning a mask. The latest guidelines from the CDC is people two ages, of the age of two and older should wear a mask in a public setting when around people who they don't live with in their household. Masks often, masks offer some protection to those of you and are most meant to protect around you in case you are unknowingly infected the virus that causes the COVID-19. A mask is not a substitute for social distancing. Masks should be worn in addition to staying at least six feet apart. Obviously, again, personal hygiene with washing your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Masks may not be necessary when you are outside by yourself, away from others, or other people who live in your household. However, some localities may have the use of mask mandates while in these public settings. So again, it's just basically saying that masks are recommended when social distancing cannot be achieved, and they're even recommending it now within the six-foot distance of each other. The only caveat to that is, again, being outside, not necessarily the case. So again, just as a reminder, anybody that's come into these meetings and these facilities here, both fire station, I believe the PD is the same way, the town hall I know is as well, and I spoke to the school district today, and anybody in this building is required to have a mask on.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Captain Gandia, could you join me up here for a minute? I need to do something to clarify a conversation you and I had this weekend. So Captain Gandia, before the meeting this past weekend, apparently the microphones were on when you and I were having a conversation. According to all the pundits on social media, they're perplexed by what the conversation was about. What I would like to do is just repeat that and see if you agree with what we discussed. You came up to say hello. For those that don't know, Captain Gandia's wife, Laura, was the president of St. Gianni's Place, which is in Hudson, New Hampshire. She has since, she resigned from that board prior to myself resigning from that board. I was on the Board of Directors for St. Gianni's Place and still sit as an advisor for that particular home. That is a home that has been opened for women who are in distress, who are, they're pregnant, they don't have any place to go, and they need help. And Captain Gandia had asked me if I had resigned from that board. I did resign from the board, and we discussed why I did. And just if I can accurately reflect what I said. What I said was is that I had mentioned to the other folks on the board that when women moved into the home that I really would be gone because I felt that it was not my skillset to be able to serve those women, and that mission was sort of complete for me at that point. Was that the conversation we had?
That's exactly the conversation we had.
Yeah, I mean, we're just, you know, so we were just talking about, you know, how we help people in the community. That home remains open. It serves many, has served many women. They're still working during COVID, and I think they do a great job. So, thank you, Captain.
Okay, you're welcome.
Just as a further clarification, as a father of daughters, I, you know, I have a great deal of respect for, you know, all members of the female race, and I am also the former umpire chief for softball, and really do believe in empowering people to do the best they can whenever they can. Now, on to the next subject, the subject of masks. What has come up is, is that, is the wearing of masks, just do it out of kindness. You know, that's what we hear from a lot of the doctors and everything, and while the science may not be perfect or imperfect, I don't know, but, you know, just do it out of kindness. Additionally, just for a matter of record, December 7th of this year is my four-year anniversary of being cancer-free. I was diagnosed with the same disease that Mr. Frida was diagnosed with four years ago this past October. You know, things didn't turn out the same for him as they did for me. I was very lucky. You know, Dr. Munoz saved my life. So as a leader in the community, I come out here and I wear a mask and I try to do social distancing and do all the right things. Not all of us want to come out and do this in public, but if you run for office and you're in a leadership position, you need to do that. With that, I know the Budget Committee has something that they need to address because one of their members has some family issues. So I'm going to turn to Chair Franz, the chairperson of the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Farrell, and thank you, Town Council. So it was brought to my attention that one of our members, Christine Patton, has requested to attend the meetings remote due to family health concerns and COVID, and I reached out to Attorney Ramsdale for guidance in regards to how to proceed and with 91A and what have you. His guidance was it is permissible as long as the Budget Committee is willing to make an accommodation to that. So we would need the vote, and thank you again, Town Council, for allowing us to do this. So as mentioned, Christine's going to be out for an extended period of time for that reason because of COVID, and we would just need to have a vote to make sure that we're all in agreeance to allowing her to do that remote. There are four rules that we have to abide by according to Attorney Ramsdale. First is we need to abide by all 91A. Second is we also need to ensure that the public can hear any questions from any members that are not in attendance. So whether it's, it can't be a text, it can't be an email, it has to be on a speakerphone or via Zoom. The other one is also at the beginning, they have to state as the reason why, or state that they're out, they're remote for whatever reason. And then, was that three or four? Three. And then the fourth one, I mentioned 91A. Let me just pull it up, I apologize.
Roll call votes.
Roll call votes, thank you. So I would just like to have, you know, we have majority here, just a vote on if we're in agreeance to allowing Christine to utilize that or to be remote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Does the roll call start now?
And the roll call will start now. So I also have Paul Skalark temporarily out today for COVID concerns as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Town Council.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to approach the council? Yes, sir.
Take this off, John, or?
Yeah, Dan, as long as you're six foot away from someone.
All right.
So that will be fine.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to address the council. When I was watching the meeting the other night about the setting the tax rate, there were a few comments that were made by some counselors that I'd like to address. Councilor Paul talked about pay cuts, and everybody was like, you can't go there. I want to remind the council and the public out there, years ago, all town employees, school district employees, when times were tough, did take a pay freeze. However, that year at town meeting, when everybody did that, one individual went back and reinstated the pay increases for his department. And that's how we ended up in this town with restricting reconsideration. A little history lesson there, okay? I don't say go after the town employees' pay. They work hard. I personally, working for the town for 28 years, the other night, my wife was going through some stuff, and we're like, when our kids were born, we were, you know, we got notices and cards and stuff from the council. I'd like to see the council be more intertwined, I guess, with our employees, because when you make these tough decisions about cutting somebody, you know, it's their, it's their family that you're looking to cut, you know? And when you're cutting employees, it's the last one in that goes out the door, all right? It's not the person at the top or, you know, other areas. So, you know, I would just like that, you know, the council be aware of that. So to me, another comment, you know, Councilor Green made was, you know, we shouldn't look at fire and police for cutting. I think everything's on the table. Everything should be looked at, you know? And the reason I say that is, you know, owning a business for years, you have to look and say, okay, if I've had a position that's been vacant for eight months, 10 months, do I really need it? Can I hold off on it? You know? And, you know, you say you have to tighten your belts, you know, and Tom talked about that, Councilor Dolan talked about that, and I know that the Expendable Trust Fund that didn't get passed, and I watched one of those meetings, and when, you know, they said, oh my goodness, how are we going to plow and this and that? I don't know about you guys, but if you drive by the fire stations we have in this town, north, south, central, there are plows sitting there. I just priced out a plow for one of my trucks, $5,100, okay? Just for the plow. That's not counting the truck, all right? The police department has a truck with a plow. Years ago, the town used to plow the school district. The school district got their own equipment. Next thing you know, the school district's plowing the complex across the street, you know, and sanding it. So can things be done differently? Maybe you'll need to look at that, but to say we have $20,000 of plows sitting there, that's a lot of money, just to be sitting there, you know? So that was one of my comments. I know when I retired in 2008, I was at home, and the same thing was going on about cutting the budget. Things were tight, you know? And they were talking about cutting employees. And I'm like, nobody's mentioning that we have people retiring, like I retired. I came down to that meeting and I voiced my opinion about that, and the council member sat there, none of you were there, I think, maybe Tom was there, and I said, I'm retiring, you know, save the person at the bottom, don't let them go, you know, just don't fill my position. And people on the council were like, I didn't know he was retiring, but things like that that maybe the council needs to look at. And I know it's a bottom-line budget, you know, so it doesn't really matter. You could say, cut this, cut that, it's a bottom-line budget. That's what it is. And it's up to the town manager to manage that budget, you know? So if you give him, you know, $30 million, as long as he doesn't go over $30 million, you know, if you're saying, well, I don't really want this program, if he feels it's there, it's there, you know? So it's just a few things I wanted to point out, and, you know, I know that our healthcare insurance is high in this town, and I know years ago, we talked about town and school working together and seeing if, and I don't know whatever happened to that.
Are you looking for an answer?
Yeah, John, I'm looking at you.
They're not interested in having the conversation with us. They have School Choice. We talked to them a few times about it. They're just not, they're not willing to have that conversation with us.
And it's too bad, because, I mean, I pay one tax bill, whether it's town or school, it's one tax bill.
I understand.
And if it can save money, I mean, I go on the insurance part because being retired, I have to buy my insurance through the town, and it's extremely expensive, you know, it's not cheap. My wife used to work in Manchester, and her health insurance was cheaper for better. And I don't understand how come we are so high. I don't know if it's, it's something that the town can look at and say, what can we do to improve the health of our employees so that they're not using so much, you know, medical insurance?
I understand.
So.
Let me know if you have more, Dan, because if you do, I'm going to need to extend your time.
Uh.
You only get five minutes these days under the, under the rules, so just let me know. You're running out, that's why I'm asking.
No, I'm just looking at my notes, because as you get older, you have to write everything down.
I understand.
You know? Oh, well, I get back to the plowing part, okay? Because, I mean, I'm out there plowing, and I see the town vehicles out there plowing, and I know the, you know, people will say, well, the senior center has to be plowed. We have to hire somebody for that. Well, you know what? Why can't the town truck swing through there? You know, just like sanding and salting. Why can't our town vehicles sand and salt our complexes? You know? It's not like the senior center has to be plowed right away because all of a sudden, you know, everything is closed, so it can be put off. So those are my comments. I hope you take those in consideration when you're going through your budget process.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw our closing comments on Saturday or not.
No, I was working to pay my tax bill.
Well, thank you for that. So to address your thing about the, so what we learned around all of the collective bargaining agreements is, is that, you know, you can, you know, go back and approach the employees, but there's a, there's a legal guideline you have to follow in a process.
Yep.
So that is possible, but you have to follow a process. Otherwise, there's all these labor laws that apply.
Yep.
So that's why, the comment was, is we can't go down that path right now. It doesn't mean never. It just means you can't do it in the setting that we were in. We need to go through the same process we go through when we negotiate contracts.
The only reason I brought that up, John, was because it happened years ago.
Understood.
Okay? And everybody did do it. And I'm not saying that's what they should do, by no means.
I understand.
Our town employees work very hard, and some departments are understaffed, building department for one, all right?
Yeah, I understand. The other comments are interesting. I mean, what we said at the end of the meeting was, is, I think the final comment was, is I'm sitting at the kitchen table and I just lost my job.
Yep.
Tell me what you absolutely have to have and what can you live without.
Yep.
And come back to us and say, all right, I have to have these things. Tell us what they are, and then let's talk about it. And that's how we closed the meeting.
I mean.
If that makes sense, and some of the ideas you have are good.
I mean, having owned a business for years, I mean, I look at every single penny, and I'm not saying that, you know, people on the town side don't do that. They do do that. And, you know, I know there were some comments about the generator for the longest time, and I will give Chief Hart credit, okay? I'm sure he knew coming forward, saying we don't have to replace that, he'd probably get a lot of grief for it, but he did it.
Yep.
Okay? There are other people that would have just spent the money.
Yes.
Okay? Just because, if you don't spend it, you won't get it next year, all right? And I have to give him credit for that, all right? I mean, to come forward and say, no, we don't need that generator, I think that was awesome.
And the only other thing I would say to you is, is that tomorrow night, the school board's having a meeting, and they now have public comment. So please feel free, please feel free to, you know, as a former SRO, feel free.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could also just address the comment on the health insurance as well.
Sure.
Just, Dan, for you, so you're aware, so number of years ago, so when I first actually came on, the council had asked me to look into what other options were available to us as a municipality for health insurance, because right now, we go through a conglomerate Health Trust.
Right.
Is who we use. As John mentioned, the school uses School Choice. School Choice is a Cigna product, Health Trust is an Anthem product. The long and the short of it is, we actually hired a healthcare consultant to do a lot of the work for us, to show us what were our options, purchasing health insurance directly through Anthem, going with Health Trust, going with School Choice or self-insurance. And basically, after all that, he came back and he had a product, and he even said, I'm not going to be able to save you any money. What you're getting through Health Trust is probably the best you're going to be able to do because of how many municipalities are in that pool. It's a pool, and so the concept is that helps bring down everyone, everyone's insurance. On the whole, we've done pretty well with them. The guaranteed maximum rate this year is 2.3%. A couple of years ago was 1.9%. What we have seen, especially since the Affordable Care Act was passed, it can be certainly argued that there were a lot of good parts to the Affordable Care Act with pre-existing conditions and, you know, keeping people under age 26, but one thing it hasn't done is made health insurance more affordable anywhere. It's gone up everywhere. With the schools, the issue you have there is the health insurance product, Health Trust, is written into the town's collective bargaining agreements. Similarly, with the schools, School Choice is written into their collective bargaining agreements. So it would take a monumental shift for one entity to go over to the other. Doesn't mean you couldn't, but likely what would happen is, if we combined health insurances and either we all went on School Choice or they all came on Health Trust, is someone's is going to go up, and the school's probably going to go up, the town's going to go down a little bit, because we have a higher risk pool than what the school has. Did look into the option of self-insurance, combining school and town. We're right on that cusp as far as having enough employees or not having enough employees. It's a big risk, though, when you do the self-insurance, because if you're not budgeting enough for the end of the year, then you find yourself, you know, Who's Creek and not having enough money to pay for it. So, but we've, what I should do at one of the meetings is have our HR coordinator in along with Lisa to talk about the incentives the town offers throughout the year to the employees to try to cut down on the usage of the health insurance, where they go, for instance, trying to get them so they don't go to the emergency room and go to like a convenient MD. That's why I'm very excited about convenient MD opening up at Lunandary. You go to convenient MD for stitches as opposed to Elliot Urgent Care. It's going to cost you so much less to do that. And what health insurance does is they have an incentive program whereby if you have to have a procedure, you can look up to see where the lower-cost places are to have that procedure, and they'll actually pay you to go to the place.
My wife does that.
Yeah. So we have a lot of those incentives built in. So is health insurance expensive? Absolutely, no question. But relatively speaking, town by town, in looking at what others' rates went up, a lot of towns went up double digits this year, and we're, like I said, our maximum is going to be 2.3. I think we're probably doing as well as we can being on Health Trust right now.
I mean, I think it'd be interesting to find out, are employees out a lot, or what can we do to keep them healthier? Would that lower our insurance rate?
Sure, the less they're going to the doctors, they're, what we don't want to do is try to, we don't want to send the message, don't go to the doctors.
Right.
If you're sick. That's not the message we're trying to send. But yes, you want to try to incentivize behavior, good, healthy behavior, so that they don't have to go to the doctors as much. Or if they do have to go to the doctors, doing, like I said, going to a convenient MD instead of an Elliot Urgent Care, or maybe doing video visits with their PCP as opposed to going into the doctor's office. So there's different behaviors you can, and that's what the whole money incentive is for, is to try to change that behavior by incentivizing monetary gifts, if you will, for them choosing cheaper options.
I just got two things, John.
Sure.
Just, I didn't want to pick on the fire department, but, you know, I just wanted to mention that. Secondly, is, because if I need you, I want to make sure you show up, you know, being old like I am. The other thing is, do we pay medical insurance part-time employees? Or is it just full-time employees?
What's our, our guideline is federal guideline of 30 hours, right?
Yeah, so we only pay, the medical insurance is only paid on full-time employees. The only part-time employees who have medical insurance are those who were previously full-time employees for the town and are still working for the town part-time where there was no separation in their employment. Otherwise, if you're hired as a part-time employee, you're not eligible for health insurance.
So it's only for full-time employees?
Correct. With the exception, too, of the town clerk does not receive health benefits.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thanks.
All right, thank you. So anyone else, public comment? Yes? Marge?
Sorry, I'm getting old, I forget.
Marge Bedoy, Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission believes that protecting our waterways is the most important thing we can do for future generations of people and wildlife. We'd like to set the bar for other communities in their efforts to protect their waterways. We have produced, we think that public education is a big part of that, so we have produced a brochure and a letter that we are mailing out to people who abut waterways, brooks, streams, ponds, and it explains things to do and not to do in relation to that stream, and I have a copy for each of you if you'd like.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you very much. This is Marge. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road. Just some information for the board to let you know, as you probably know, when RSA was made into law on the PFOA Water Commission, they inadvertently left off the town of Lunandary in that statute. And so this year, I submitted a bill to add Lunandary, just to, you know, close the gap. Unfortunately, there was another representative that submitted a similar bill, but may have tweaked the commission words some more, so they disallowed my bill in favor of the other one, but rest assured, whatever happens, we will make sure that Lunandary does get added to the statute that makes it legal for us to be on that committee. And so either it comes through my commission, my committee or not, I'll make sure that Lunandary gets, you know, through it, no matter what the other bill says, so, but we tried, so, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else for public comment? Anything from the council? All right, folks, let's move on. No public hearings this evening, new business. Public work, budget workshop, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's a few items that we want to follow up on this evening from Saturday's discussion. First off is, there was a question about the price per household on trash and recycling, and you all should have that worksheet in front of you that shows that the cost for, cost per household is about $180 annually or $15 a month for trash and recycling. So I don't know if there's any follow-up questions on that. So, I don't know if there's any follow-up questions on that.
So, let me see if I, so for, so the total cost is 1.654 is the total cost. And we're looking at $15 a month. Anybody have any questions on $15 a month for trash and recycling in the town of Lunedary? Is that a good deal, I guess, huh? I'd say it's a really good deal. Yes, sir.
When I first moved to Lunedary, I've lost track, 30 some odd years ago, we had a transfer station, so you could load up, you can throw your trash in your trunk, and you could drive it over. Or if you elected to have your trash picked up, you had to hire a private trash pickup firm. And if I remember right, the cost over 30 years ago was $32 a month. For trash pickup, basically, $8 a week. So, if you put that into context with today's cost, it's a real bargain today at $15 a month.
Thank you. Anyone else on trash and recycling? Are there any other questions? So, even with the dramatic cost of recycling, we're still getting what I'd say is a good deal. Next item?
Sure, so there was a question that came up about what the town is going to be doing into the future as far as going after grants that may or may not be claimed. And we've started this process in earnest this past year, and I'm going to actually ask Justin to speak a little bit about it and let you know what we're doing on the town level to go after grants that we hadn't been doing previously. Please proceed.
So, in front of you, you have a sheet of the grants that we've received over the past fiscal year, along with this fiscal year. We currently will be undergoing our first single audit since at least I was here, so at least five years ago, which means we received over $750,000 in grants. If you look at it, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, I'm not able to locate it, but I believe it's about 1.3 million. Out of that, about 1.1 million is from March through today. We are actually going to be later on accepting two additional grants that we have been awarded as well. What the town has done is we've essentially taken every opportunity we can to get grants that benefit us and help us going forward. We have reached out to a vendor in Littleberry Press who helps us and assists us in writing grants that are beneficial to us. He has a database that has endowments and other trust and grants that are available in the area that benefit us. One thing to keep in mind when we are going after grants is they need to be managed and maintained to ensure that we're not double-dipping from one grant to the other. The other thing to keep in mind is a lot of grants come with strings attached. It's not a blank check, "Thank you very much, have a great day." It's, "You need to do X, Y, Z and continue it for X amount of years." So, that's something to keep in mind when we continue with the grants. But as you can see from the previous year, the grants have been a centerfold for the town so far.
It appears this number doesn't include the grants we've received for the rail trail.
That is correct, it does not yet.
How much money have we received in support of the rail trail and grants?
So far, or are we expected to?
So far.
So far, we have not, as the rail trail is currently in the process, in the early stages of it.
Well, we have received grants in the past.
Correct, this is just this year and fiscal year 20, yeah, fiscal year 20.
And what is the rail trail applying for?
I believe it is the NHDOT. It is for about $800,000, I believe.
Yeah, and that money has already been awarded to the town. We just haven't received it yet because their awards and their delivery of the money, it lags behind, so, but we have been notified that we've been awarded that money, that $800,000.
So, with that, just so everyone's listening, the town will have been award, have, award, will be, upon receipt of the $800,000, the town would have received $2,454,000. Almost $2.5 million in grants. Nice job. Keep working on the grants.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would also compliment Justin. He's, this is something Justin has spearheaded, and as he said, he works with this vendor to help find these grants that we previously were not going after. And the fact that we're having this additional audit this year because we have so much grant money coming in, I think is a testament to the work he's done on this.
So, that almost $2.5 million a year would equate to almost 45 cents on the tax rate? Ballpark?
I believe so, yes.
So, that's 45 cents per thousand on the tax rate, not being, going out to the community. Now, very, very nicely done.
So, the other thing to keep in mind here is I want to give credit to the police and fire department, as they've worked very hard and diligent with me and have applied for a lot of the grants and have worked with me on that. So, shout out to them for that. Very good job.
Any further questions on grants?
Yes. I do great work on all that were involved and are involved with the grants. For the past couple of years, I've been really stressing the importance of grants, both on the town and the school side. Justin, just a quick question. I had, a couple of years ago, I don't even remember the company or whatever, but...
Littleberry Press.
Thank you. Did you ask him for a municipality discount?
Yes.
Great.
He works with all different municipalities, towns, children for educational scholarships. And he gave us, I don't know if it's a discount, but it's his municipality rate.
Awesome, great, yeah. He was saying, and again, I'm trying to call a couple of years ago, but he was saying that, like, normally, it's around $35, and for municipalities, a lot cheaper, so great job on that, so thank you.
Yep, and I mean, he's been great where there's items, because of our budget freeze, that we haven't been able to do, where I've been reaching out to him, saying, "Hey, is there a grant available for this?" And he's getting back to me, hopefully, with that ability so we can still perform those trainings that we're looking forward to.
Okay, thank you. And then, I overheard Christine Patton has a question, so Jen has her on the phone. She's going to hold the mic, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
On the grants for the fire department and the police station, what are the grants going to be used for? Do they have plans for it already?
So, I guess, can you emphasize what you mean with the grants for the police station and fire station?
So, perhaps what I can do is read the grants.
You stated that the police and the fire...
So, Christine, turn down your computer.
Had also sent out requests for...
So, Christine, turn down the volume on your computer, because we're getting feedback. And I will, I will read the grants to you. Assistance to firefighter grant, $210,909. Emergency management performance grant, $68,340. Safer funds grant, fiscal year '20 through '21, that's for the hiring of four firefighters, $2,000, uh, $230,849. EMS warm zone for $8,408. And on the police side, I have a bulletproof vest grant this year for $5,812. The, I know the police department also has had many different types of grants over the years, as I recall, in many different areas. Does that answer your question, Christine?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further on grants? Next item, please.
So, we've had quite a few discussions, actually, since Saturday. Myself, Justin, the police department, Public Works, fire department, on the idea of the maintenance position, the mechanic. I think the long and the short of it is, at least for this budget season, it's going to take a lot more looking into than I think we'll have something ready, if it's even possible to do it in the budget, as far as getting a cost-benefit analysis. I think some of the issues we're running into here is that fixing a pickup truck in a police cruiser is certainly very different than fixing an ambulance, a ladder truck, you know, a six-wheeler at the DPW garage. And so, what you're talking about is more likely not just one mechanic, but several specialized mechanics. When someone, someone had brought up, the point is that there's some city or community that has their own maintenance division. And to myself, I kind of chuckled, because I thought, "We don't need a maintenance division." But after talking it through, I understand maybe why they do have a maintenance division. It's because you have so many different specialized vehicles that if you're truly going to do it all in-house, it's going to require a specialized set of tools, specialized set of people, and an area for where all of this can get worked on as well. I think Janos would tell you the current existing garage would not be adequate for the different vehicles. I did ask Justin to run a history of what we have been spending over the years since 2017. In total, on average, it's probably somewhere around $250,000 on vehicle repairs. Some years, it's higher than that, some it's lower. The bulk of that being in the fire department and in Public Works, which is no surprise, because that's where the largest vehicles are. And when you're talking about the fleet that the town has, that Town Hall has for assessing and building, and then the police, those are all leased vehicles. And so, typically, the maintenance on those are going to be a lot less anyway, because we're turning them over every four to five years. So, I think the feeling right now is that certainly this is going to take a lot more looking into, but the initial eyeballing of it would be that we'd probably end up spending a lot more to do this all in-house, because when you're talking employees, you're talking benefits and everything that comes along with it than we do right now, sending them out for repair. Did I miss anything? Did I represent that well, Darren, Bill?
So, let's not strike that yet, and we'll just hold that, put that in the parking lot. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, thank you.
Yep. The last piece we have tonight is, I believe, Justin's going to present some information from the, from the library.
Yes, at the last meeting, it was requested that I present the library budget. I have given you all a copy of it. It's also the same that is in your budget book. I spoke with the library director, and she informed me that the request is default as, she is submitting a default budget as requested. The only increases are contractually obligated. As for their 2.5%, the trustees will be meeting on November 18th to discuss the cuts at that point.
Okay, then we can wait until the 23rd. Initially, just let me see, does anyone have any questions about the library budget? So, let's hold that off till the 23rd. So, if you look at the 23rd, we're going to have, and, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a longer evening, so everybody, you know, plan on that, please, so that we can get through all of the items on the 23rd, so that we can advance this budget cycle along. Is there anything further from anyone regarding the budget this evening?
I do, Mr. Chair. Justin, I know you said Mr. Cotton was going to look into it, but were you able to find out any information if the fuel farm, if that is without the road tax or not? Or with or without?
So, I was not able to find that out during today.
All right, thank you. If you could just let me know, and the reason why is because from my understanding, municipalities are exempt from state tax.
Yep.
And, you know, if we're paying, that'd be great not to, but I'm pretty sure...
I absolutely agree, just the time ran out today.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. I'm sorry, need to get my agenda out here. So, I've got nothing else? All right, those of you who are not here for the, those of you who are only here for the budget, you are welcome to leave, if you like. And please plan on a much longer evening on the 23rd. Moving on in new business. Ordinance, ordinance 2020-05, an amendment to the municipal code relating to the traffic safety ordinance. First reading, I'll accept the motion to waive reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. We will be addressing this ordinance at our next meeting, so please be prepared, and it will be a public workshop, public comm hearing.
That'll be the November 30th meeting.
Excuse me. The November 30th meeting, thank you. That's right, we have to notice it, sorry. Ordinance 2020-06, an amendment to the Lunedary zoning ordinance relative to elderly housing. First reading, I'll take a motion to waive first reading.
So, moves, Chairman?
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and that's moving to 11:30 as well?
Correct.
Thank you. Deanna Rhoades, a request for a building permit in accordance with RSA 674:41, presented by Colleen. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the council, you are familiar, we've had a few requests like this recently for a building permit on a lot that does not have access or frontage on a Class 5 or better road. You have a packet with a little bit of history. Variance was approved by the ZBA in 2008 that allowed the creation of this lot, and the planning board subsequently approved the SOD division creating the parcel in 2010. The, we've worked with the applicant, the property owner, the property owner is here this evening, if you have any questions of him. But basically, the planning board has reviewed and made a recommendation, and we would ask the town council to make a recommendation to allow the building inspector to issue a building permit with the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum. Those conditions basically would require that the driveway, the access drive to the site be built to an NFPA access road standard. So, it means that it would be a driveway that is 24 feet wide, capable of holding the weight of a fire truck. Those are standard items. So, we've made the applicant aware of this, they understand the conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And if you have any questions of the property owner, I'm sure he could answer those as well.
Any questions for Colleen? Yes?
Sorry. I just, I'd like to clarify the difference between this situation and the other situation, because I know it becomes a slippery slope. We start doing it for one, then they'll come back and go, "You did it for this one, you're going to do it for me." I'd really, really appreciate if you could get into the details as to what is significantly different.
Absolutely. So, our recommendation on this is exactly the same as the recommendation on the Brewster Road application that was before you previously, and on other past applications. There was one on Page Road about two or three years ago. This is consistently the recommendation that staff has made with the concurrence of the fire department, that access to a building lot needs to meet NFPA requirements. So, we're coming with the same, same recommendation that we always have in being consistent. I think the difference in this case is that the driveway length is approximately 200 to 300 feet is what's estimated. So, for the applicant, it's a much shorter driveway than the Brewster Road application. We were looking at something that was about 2,000 feet, and the property owner in that instance had concerns with the cost of construction. Our concern from a staff perspective is not with the cost of construction. We want to make sure that there's a safe access to a building lot. So, our recommendation is the same. It's just that this is a different instance where the applicant understands the, and the length of the driveway is much shorter, so it's less of a cost to the applicant in this instance.
Okay, so he is going to fix the roads?
He's, he's going to build an access road that meets that 24-foot-wide NFPA standard.
To get into the development?
Exactly, to get to the house.
I just want to be clear, so everyone understands the difference.
Yep.
He's creating the access into the development, even though the developments are going to be, the roads in the development will be smaller, correct?
Well, it's not a development, it's just one house. It's one, it's a, it's a lot of record, and he's building the access to that one house, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Any further questions? Okay. Yes. Sure, please.
So if I recall, the last one that we had, there was, as we talked about, it was a longer driveway, and I think the recommendation, and I'm not sure, but I think the recommendation from, or we heard from the fire department that said that it was very difficult to get any type of apparatus in there because of the way, the size of the, of the street, right?
Yes.
And the width of it. And also where to turn around was an issue. So this particular one, I just heard you say that it's wider, so that it'll accommodate that. Is there enough room for our apparatus to turn around as well?
There is, so the NFPA standard requires a turnaround, be built at every 1,300 feet. And so this does not exceed those, those criteria. So the fire department has looked at this. Brian Johnson has been working with us on this, and he's confident that this meets the requirements of what they need to be able to access the lot in accordance with NFPA criteria.
Okay, so that's the difference also that-
Exactly.
Okay, so that they weren't signing off on the last one, they are signing off on this one?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Anything further? So Colleen, is the motion you're looking for, that the town council will authorize the, the, the building department to issue a permit with the following conditions?
Exactly.
Access to the lot not be constructed, access to the lot to be constructed to meet NFPA 141 standard, including. Okay, it's items, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items that it has to include on the memorandum dated to the planning board from November 4th, 2020, regarding 15 Diana Road, map three, lot 13, excuse me, 138A-1.
Yes.
I have, can I have a motion? May I have a second? All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, Diana. Diana, I was going to call her Diana. Tell you, I'm losing it. You're welcome. Good luck with your construction. All right, resolution 2020-15, A Resolution Relative to the Acceptance of Unanticipated Revenue Under RSA 31:95B. What do you have for us, Justin?
So before I get into that, I just want to say Steve Cotton is listening at home and informed me that we are indeed exempt from state tax on fuel, just so everyone is aware.
Okay, fantastic. We are exempt for state fuel, fantastic.
So I'm not sure which 115 is, so I'm just going to go into both at the same time. We received-
Okay, well then, let me introduce resolution 2020-16 as well.
Perfect. So we've received two grants. One of them is an additional election grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life in order to help us out with all the additional costs that were accompanied the election this year during this crazy time with the increase in absentee ballots and all the COVID precautions. The second one is for our Londonderry Arts Council to help assist with the concerts on the Common over the summer and promote that aspect. Are there any questions about either one?
May I have a second, please?
Second?
Are there any questions? Please proceed.
Based on our expenditures for the elections? We add in this, or deduct it from our expenses, what's the net? Do we know? So I, I don't have that off the top of my head. Okay. And we're still acquiring expenses as, not as we speak, but there's still additional things going on in the background regarding all the absentee ballots and ensuring that we're in compliance. At one point, I'd like to- Yep, absolutely. Know where it is. Okay, thank you.
And this is another grant added to our almost 2.5 million?
This one is part of that 2.5 million.
Okay.
I included it in there.
Fantastic. Okay, all those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative for the acceptance of, of that revenue. Thank you. Next item. Order 2020-16, An Order Relative to Distribution of Recreation Capital Reserve Funds. Says to you again, Mr. Camper.
Yes, it is. So the rec department is looking to withdraw $12,749 in order to purchase a lawnmower to help assist with mowing all the lawns in the upcoming spring season and summer.
Are there any questions?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion?
We have questions. Could you hold the motion, please?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed, Jim.
Oh, okay. Did we put this lawnmower or whatever, this equipment out to bid? We have four different bids for this, for lawn mowers. One came in at the 12,749, which is also, it's similar to the lawn mowers we currently have, which will help assist with repairs and things of that nature, and it came with another set of blades. Not only was it the cheapest, but it had those benefits. We had another one that came in at 12,875. We had another one that came in at, it looks like $40,753. And one more that was $12,799.
That one that came in at that other number, does that come with the driver to do all that?
All the benefits.
Man.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, I don't have any other, there's no other questions. The other question was withdrawn. I'll accept the motion, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept order 2020-16 as presented.
Second?
All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and the order passes. All right, we had minutes sent to us prior to the meeting in our email. I'm looking for approval of minutes for October 19th and for November 11th. Can I have one motion for both?
So move, Mr. Chairman, for both?
I need a second, please. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
John?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I had amended one of those. I sent it to Kirby, but she said she didn't have time to get it to us, so-
Do you have an amendment from?
I just had one amendment, yeah, and it was, did she add in the generator?
So-
It was two, two amendments.
So the other one, we can talk off camera too, because it wasn't enough. The other one, I couldn't find it anywhere in the recording.
So for which date is that?
Okay.
This is from last Wednesday, the 11th.
From the 11th?
Yep.
Okay, so let's just approve the 19th, and let's see if we can, you know, find the minutes. So could you withdraw the motions, please?
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
I'm a second. Approval for October 19th, 2020, minutes only, please.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, and we'll revisit the 11th, the one for the 11th on the 23rd. Do I have any liaison reports from anyone? Anything? Town manager report.
All set.
All right, our next, it doesn't say it here, but our next meeting is on November 23rd. It is mainly a budget workshop. I have been asked by several, I'm actually surprised by how many people have asked me since Saturday, that in my closing comments, was I, was I serious? Yes, I was serious. I, please look at every line. We're, we're going to go through these, this spreadsheet that you presented, and I, you know, the council wants to hear, you know, what, what was put into this? What, what are we looking at? I, I want to be able to understand, you know, more. It's, you know, we've, we've had, we've been very fortunate with a very good economy, and we're, we're facing unknown times. So yes, I am very serious. You are sitting at your kitchen table, you have lost your job, and I want to know, what are we going to do?
Mr. Chair, I would just add too, that in, in addition to what you received already, we're going to be, prior to the meeting, we'll be giving the council and the budget committee a supplemental list with additional items listed in there.
I appreciate that. Is there anything, have I missed anything? Or is there anything further this evening that you would like to discuss? Seeing nothing, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're coming back on the 23rd, and I, we do want to hear from the public. Thank you.